Good evening, welcome to the Select Board meeting of June 9, 2025, 6:00 PM in Town Hall, Room 3. The first matter is the signing of the warrants, gentlemen.
A motion, Mr. Chair, to sign the warrant.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And that is unanimous. Approval of regular session-minute meetings.
A motion to approve regular session-minute meetings of May 12, 2025. You want me to do all three, or one at a time, Mr. Chair?
Whatever your pleasure is.
And also, May 20, 2025, and May 29, 2025.
And I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
That is unanimous. Approval of executive session minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve executive session minutes for May 20, 2025, and May 29, 2025.
And I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
The next-genner item is public hearings. Do we want to take care of the...
We'll do the citation first, yes.
Citation first.
Yeah, we can go to that now, that would be good. Mr. Chairman, yeah.
We're going to go off schedule for a moment. Probably for a more important matter than the others that are coming up. We do have a citation this evening for Chris Pila, who serves as our treasurer. Chris has served as the president of the Massachusetts Collectors and Treasurers Association, so all of his associates across Commonwealth. And in doing so, his performance was rated very, very high, which brings a good light to the town of Milford, but as well as Chris. But the fact that just shows his professionalism. He's out there leading a professional organization in that same specter. So, Chris, I have a citation. "Be it known that the Select Board hereby offer their congratulations to Christopher Pila in recognition of your dedication to the Massachusetts Collectors and Treasurers Association. During your tenure as president, your contributions in service will continue to inspire future leaders of MCTA. On behalf of the people of Milford, the Select Board extend their very best wishes and express the hope for good future, good for, future good fortune, and continued success in all endeavors given this ninth day of June 2025." Thomas O'Laughlin, Paul Mazakelli, and Mike Walsh. Congratulations, Chris.
Thank you.
I could just quickly mention a couple of things.
Sure.
We're very proud of Chris. First of all, started out as the treasurer, now is the treasurer-collector here in town. I just want to point out that as president, he oversaw the legal and educational aspects of the association. And at that time, the new tax title law was being written and drafted, and he actually testified to the House and Senate on behalf of the association as president. So, again, he's doing yeoman's work. We're very proud of him. He's reorganizing both offices together now. So, and to serve as president, I really think is a feather, not only in his cap, but for the town of Milford.
For the town of Milford, sure.
So, thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now he has a lot of spare time on his hands, right? So we all think when we do those things. But, Chris, congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice. You're welcome.
Congratulations, pal.
There you go, my friend. Nice job.
You're on camera.
Your daughter. She's going to stay.
She can stay. You're famous.
Congratulations. Thanks, sir.
We have a public hearing this evening. I'm not sure if the attorney is online.
Yeah, I think I see his name up there.
Yep.
Is he up there, Andy? Attorney Arthur Perlman?
Yes, he is, sir.
Okay, I did see him up there.
Good evening, Attorney Perlman.
Good evening. Can I be heard and seen? My name just came up.
Yes.
What happened?
Can't see you, Arthur, but we can hear you.
Can't see you. So if you want to, you might want to click on the camera on the Zoom. Usually down in the left corner, bottom-left.
Audio? I'm not...
It doesn't have a video.
I don't see a video.
Okay. Well, stick with us.
We can hear you, Arthur, if you want to...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Loud and clear.
No problem.
My hair is combed and everything. This is terrible. If it pleased the board, my name is Arthur Perlman. I represent Vonsha LLC. It's a Massachusetts limited liability company doing business as MAC Package, and it's located at 96 Pleasant Street in Milford. It is seeking a transfer of 50% of the ownership interest in the limited liability company from Viral Patel, who was 100% owner, to Atul Patel, who will now be a 50% owner. It's also seeking a change of manager on the alcohol license from Viral Patel to Atul Patel. The limited liability company holds an all-alcohol license, and therefore, the transfer of ownership interest and change of manager on that license must be approved by the town of Milford as well as the ABC. Published notice of this hearing was accomplished by the town. Mail notice to abud is not required for a change in ownership interest or a change in manager. Atul Patel is currently living at 71 Jones Road in Oakdale, and is working at PAC Package, already working at MAC Package. The current operating hours will be maintained. The layout of the store will be maintained. Nothing regarding the operation of the business is changing. This is all about ownership and a change of manager on the alcohol license. The owner is familiar with the laws relative to the sale of alcohol. He will continue to uphold the statutory law as well as any rules or regulations of the town of Milford regarding the sale of alcohol. I am requestfully requesting that this transfer of ownership in the limited liability company and the change of manager on the alcohol license be approved by your board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions by any of the board members?
I don't have any.
I don't either, Mr. Chairman. And this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to speak on this matter? Anyone else online? No, there is no one else.
The only person online, they're not saying they want to speak.
Okay.
The only person online besides me is my associate, who's there in case I totally mess up the computer.
Maybe she has a photograph. Okay, can I have a motion, gentlemen?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. A motion to approve the application for Vonsha LLC, doing business as MAC Package Store at 96 Prospect Street, who filed this application for an amendment for its all-alcohol license for a change of ownership interest and change of a manager. The new manager will be Alkumar Patel, and all paperwork is in order.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And that is unanimous. Thank you, Attorney Perlman.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, sir. The next matter is scheduled appointments. We have an appointment with the Building Commissioner, John Erickson.
Good evening, Mr. Erickson.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, John.
Thank you for seeing me this evening. So what I have in a memo to you is an outline of proposed permit fees for the Department of Inspection, building permits, plumbing permits, wiring permits, gas permits. These fees were updated at various times over the years. The building fees have not been updated since 1994. They are based on the cost of construction, which of course has increased dramatically since 1994, but nonetheless, the rates per thousand were much lower than, I think they should be, and much lower than any other surrounding community. Similarly, or maybe not similarly, but as a next effort, we just reviewed the plumbing, gas, electrical fees to see if they were really commensurate with the scope of services that we're performing, meaning the number of inspections for a certain project primarily. And we found that some were just, you know, a little bit low. Some code requirements have changed over the years, such as on... There'll be four inspections on that. Green ground pool, rather. And so we tried to, you know, adjust the fees so that they were, you know, proportional to that scope. And as I think you guys are all aware, we're rebuilding our building department software, basically from the ground up. It's the same program, but there's been so many developments, and there was a number of new modules that are available that are going to help us with some of the, tracking some of the housing and working hand-in-hand with the Board of Health for registrations of those rental properties. So we're in the middle of that process. So it just seemed like the prudent idea to be now to look at adjusting these fees because they all have to be reinput into the software. So it just seemed like now is the time. One big change is done on the commercial certificate of occupancy. For decades, going probably back to the '70s, these fees were due at the end of the project before the certificate was issued. It becomes problematic for some of the bigger projects. They seem, even though the fees are well-published, they seem to take some companies by surprise. So I thought that the increased fees would adjust for the certificate of occupancy fee and just move it into the building permit fee to really expedite things at the tail end of a project, which, you know, have, some projects have seen some, some developers have been really surprised by these fees at the end. So it just wants to move everything up into the beginning of the process. I can go through any or all of the fees at your will.
One that just jumps out at me, John, is if it's a typo, if it's a typo otherwise, swimming pools on the first page, it's going down by a dollar?
Yeah, it's based on the cost of construction, and for some reason, the swimming pool fees were more than any other type of construction project. They were up to $10 a thousand. My proposal for the fees more or less across the board is $9 per thousand. It didn't make any sense on why swimming pools were at that level, but a lot of these fees just kind of developed over the years without maybe a lot of comparisons put into place.
Do you have any questions, Michael?
No, I have no questions. Just a comment, too, just to be based on what John was saying, because we were mentioning that the fees haven't changed since 1994, which would give a reason why most of these other cities and towns that you compared them with probably came up with the, you know, kept up with the economic times, such as the increase in building materials and construction costs and whatnot. Also, not all the economic conditions, but keeping up with inflation as well, which is why you have that. Plus, you also mentioned, too, John, the software that will be needed in the department to keep up with the times, especially now where other departments can also participate in that. And like you mentioned, too, it's very important that the Board of Health have access to that as well, because what, like the town meeting a year ago overwhelmingly passed unanimously, really, the occupancy inspection was reinstated, and that has started. And we're in the process of scheduling and inspecting homes to make sure that there is no illegal conversions or overcrowding or any other condition that could be a safety hazard or a public health hazard as well. And that for, you know, where the building department's involved, the Board of Health's involved, and also most of the task force, such as police and fire, are involved in this as well. So they'll need all access to that. So I really encourage that. And like I mentioned, too, it's not too hard to ask for an increase to keep up with the times since they were last done, increased since 1994, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. I will just add that our proposed fees still put us less than any surrounding town, any town that touches us, and then extended to like the Millis, Framingham, Natick towns, where we're still significantly less than any of these towns. So we're...
I see. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? John, as always, thank you very much for taking the time to put this together. I know this is no easy task, and, you know, and the time, as you just mentioned, to do the comps in other communities. Really, the only question I have, and it's just a personal question coming from me, I see in every category where you highlight in red forest what the change is going to be, and at the end, you put the fee, you know, with the word minimum. Is there, just for my own curiosity, is there a maximum?
Certainly.
So just as an example, you look at demolition residential, going to $9 per thousand of the estimated cost of construction, a $75 minimum.
Yeah, so it's based on the cost of construction. If you were going to knock down a building and it was $30,000, it'd be 30 times 9, a $270 fee, but with a minimum of whatever I have proposed there, $75.
Right, my question is, is there, and maybe there isn't, it's just, again, it's just a question coming from me, is there a maximum, or if a knockdown is $2 million, it's $9 per 2 million?
Yeah, same as, really the same as construction.
There is no max, or just a minimum?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I didn't know if that was, you know, left off or wasn't, you know, wasn't there, that's all. So there's a minimum charge, but no max?
Right. It's just proportional at that point.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, please.
A motion, Mr. Chair, to accept the revised fee structure that the Building Commissioner would recommend for the building department.
And I would gladly second that.
That's unanimous. Thanks, John.
Thank you, John. Have a great night.
Thanks, John. See you tomorrow. There is no old business on the agenda. Do either of you gentlemen have anything you want to raise?
At the town administration.
Yes, Mr. Chair, just...
Let's skip the town administrator.
Oh.
Nothing big. I'll take it honestly, not personally.
Okay. Not a problem. Sorry about that. Very brief, very brief tonight. Three items. I've been informed by Senator Becca Roush. She has submitted an earmark in the fiscal year 26 budget that not less than $25,000 shall be expended for renovations and improvements to the Milford Town Park, so this will be an assistance to that project. She submitted a second earmark, which was a request in the fiscal year 25 state supplemental budget that provided that not less than $50,000 shall be expended for bridge replacement in the town of Milford, so that will help with, obviously, the bridge project that just recently started on June 1. As the board knows, the next steps still has to go to conference committee and discussion, and then to the governor for a signature, but both look like they will be approved and be of great benefit, so I want to thank her publicly for that. A reminder, to the public, the fireworks display is scheduled for July 5. We have added a rain date of Friday, July 11. So if there is rain, seems like every weekend's been raining recently, so hopefully we won't have to deal with that. And just an update on the closing of the Best Western Hotel Shelter. The governor has informed us that due to the significant progress of the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities and their emergency assistance providers, partners have made, they have, reducing the shelter caseload and diverting and exiting families into permanent housing, the state is moving forward with the plan to close the Best Western by July 31, 2025. Families who are still eligible for shelter but have not secured permanent housing by the hotel closure date will be transferred to another shelter site. They are making every effort to keep families with school-aged children in their current location through the end of the school year, which is fast upon us. So just an update for the board. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
As I indicated, no old business, gentlemen.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention something.
Yeah, please.
Just to let the board know, too, that at a planning board meeting on May 20, 2025, the ad hoc Comprehensive Plan Committee formally motioned for approval of the Milford Comprehensive Plan 2025. The Planning Board unanimously adopted the plan, recognizing its strategic importance for guiding Milford's future development. And anybody who would like to see the plan and see what key point discussions that were made can go online, and they can get the whole plan itself and review it themselves. But that has been approved, just to let you know. It took a tad over a year.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
A new business, correspondence from the police chief concerning handicap-accessible parking at Number 6 South Main Street. Rick, aside from the memo, is there anything?
There is no additional information. Chief Tassino did review it. He said he was familiar with the request even before I had received it, and it had his support.
The young man that this is going to be utilized by, unfortunately, he was going to a concert up in Worcester, and he and some of his friends and some other people involved in gang activity, which this young man had nothing to do with, they started shooting at each other, and they got caught in the middle of it.
Oh, gee, yes, yeah.
And he actually was shot in the head. And he survived. He is quadriplegic, but very, very nice kid, so, and I know that this will help them out immensely as far as...
Sure.
Doctors' appointments and things of that kind.
Yes.
I have a motion to...
A motion to approve this request, especially where, you know, we can make accessibility for residents with disabilities more accessible. It's much needed, as you mentioned, Chairman O'Laughlin. So anyway, I recommend that we do approve the handicap parking space for 6 South Main Street in Milford, Mass.
I would gladly second that and extend to his family our prayers.
Exactly. Thank you, Michael.
The next item is from Police Chief Robbie Tassino as well, requesting a caution sign on Purchase Street, southbound prior to Camp Street. Any questions on that?
No, no, Mr. Chair. I read this over, and Mr. Skiyavi is right. I don't know if, I know you folks have actually had that road up there to get on Purchase Street, and it is a little difficult to see oncoming traffic coming like it was explained in this, so I would definitely approve a caution sign for that.
I would gladly second that, Mr. Chairman.
That is unanimous. The next item is from the Commission on Disabilities. It's two resignations from Scott Wilson, indicating that he will not be seeking to be recommissioned. And the other is from Masha Mancuso, and as brief, just wanting to be reappointed. Any questions, gentlemen?
I don't have any, Mr. Chairman.
A motion to accept their...
A motion to accept their resignation from the Commission on Disability.
I would gladly second that, Mr. Chairman.
That's unanimous. And Rick, if we can just send thanking them for the time that they did expend on behalf of the community, I'd appreciate it. Town administrative, senior citizen, disabled citizen transportation service is award of a contract.
Yes, we did go out to bid, and we did an invitation for bids. We received two bid responses. Travelers Transit, Inc. of 8 Mill River Street, Blackstone, was the low bidder at $56 per hour. If you're familiar, as I know all of you are, they're the current provider. And again, they were the low bidder of the two received, so my recommendation would to reward the contractor, Travelers Transit, Inc., as the most responsible vendor, again, based on their quote, and again, we do know their service history.
Has a motion?
Motion, Mr. Chair, based on the recommendation from our town administrator and also the quote that was given to us by Travelers Transit to definitely to make a motion to appoint the transportation service for the senior citizens and disabled citizens.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
That is unanimous.
Thank you.
The next item is the Milford Youth Center, acceptance of gifts, and there are three different gifts. The first one is AAA Charitable Given Committee, $1,000. The contact person is Maggie McMenamy. What's up on that Irish name for them?
Yeah.
Should have come to me, just bloat off. The Edondontic Group at 16 Congress Street. I talked to Greg Nagles. Very, very good doctor. Fortunately, I've had the pleasure of going there several times.
Yeah, we all did.
His annual appeal support, Community Friends Sponsor, in the amount of $2,500. The third is donation from Hyman &amp; Shirley Hill Charitable Foundation. It's their annual appeal support, and it's a $2,000 donation from Lawrence Hill, the trustee. Could I have a motion to accept those gifts and express our thanks?
A motion, Mr. Chair, to accept these very generous donations from the three parties that you just mentioned. And again, that's very appreciated, because these donations help make the programs more affordable and accessible to those, to youth of our town. So a motion to accept, Mr. Chair.
And I would gladly second that, Mr. Chairman. And again, thank you very much to the businesses that made these donations, and, you know, thank you for taking the interest of the youth in this town, because its programs and its donations like this, corporations like yourself that support the Youth Center, it gives those, you know, the children and also the ability, the director and the people that work at the Youth Center, the ability to put programs together to keep these children in a safe, you know, environment with learning as well. So again, thank you very much for your kindness.
And I echo Michael's words, and these are three different people or organizations that you do see time and again, who make charitable donations to this community to make it a better place to live.
Yes.
Thank you from the board. The next item on the agenda, invitation to speak. Is there anyone online? No, no one online. Correspondence from the Milford Youth Center. It's a memo from the director concerned with a number of the different things that have taken place, and as well as donations received. Thankfully, quite a few, as you move through the list. It's very lengthy, so if people have an interest in who's donated to the Youth Center, they're welcome to go onto the Slackman's website or to the Youth Center website, and you can peruse the list. Any questions?
No, no questions, Chair. But just like as we all mentioned, too, we're grateful for these donations and the grants, because it more or less keeps the Youth Center accessible, especially after school programs, community events, and whatnot. It makes it more affordable for the summer camp. And without these contributions, some of these programs would be struggling to exist. So we appreciate every dollar that these individuals would give. Thank you.
I think what's important, too, Mr. Chairman, is, and again, I want to say thank you to the people that made the contributions, but all of us having been in the position you currently as chairman, you know, and we get out to the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts, giving our citations, we go to the Youth Center fundraisers, give our citations, along with the shorters, we get to see these groups and what they do, what their efforts accomplish. And I go back to a weekend or two weekends ago, we had a very, very large, very significant event in our community, a rally, and one minor, minor incident. And it really involved the youth of this community. And it was amazing that, to me, and I was pretty much there through the whole thing, that we could get all these youth, young people, together to express their, you know, their support for a fellow student in our community. But where I'm going with this is that it's programs like this, the Milford Youth Center, the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts, the Little League, all the programs that corporations and people in this community privately support, that make a difference, that make the youth in our community act respectfully, respect one another, and obey the law, and still get their point across. And so if you, when you give these donations, if you, and I know you do believe they make a difference, but if you think they don't make a difference, they really, truly do. When you sit there as an elected official in this community and you watch an event like that, and that's only one of the events that we, all of us, attend, would you look at the maturity level and the respect level and everything that you would expect from the youth in our community? It's pro- It's programs and it's support like this that make it happen. And so again, thank you very, very much. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And just to give a sense of, you know, what you and Paul touched on, the donations, you have a very large one from a golf tournament, which is significant sum of money, but donation here of $20. And that $20 will multiply in the end results of the impact on the kids.
That's right.
Being able to provide positive outlets. So, thank you very much to all of those who donated. I apologize, just not having the ability to read through the list. It's three pages long, so it just really shows the support for the youth center in this community.
The only thing I have, Mr. Chairman, and we talked a little bit about it.
Yes.
The gentleman that reached out to us from Walden Woods, and I thought I heard Rick say that the police chief is looking into it.
He's going to look into that, yeah.
Okay, so I just want the gentleman from Walden Woods to know that we did get his correspondence, and it is being looked into.
Right. Thanks. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Aside from that, we do not have an executive session this evening. I have a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
And I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
That is unanimous. Good evening, and thank you very much for tuning in. Those who did or those who watched us subsequent to the meeting, we appreciate your involvement and we appreciate the support to the community that we saw in tonight's agenda. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.